To see if Ben, Ben makes it. This is a regular meeting in the zoning board of appeals. And it is April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven P M. And we're meeting by Zoom in a virtual meeting. I need to read some stuff, so I'm going to go through it. To allow public access, anyone may access a meeting. By telephone and or Zoom, we're recording in the city Norwalk YouTube channel. Specific structures and links can be found, and I'm going to give this. I know it doesn't make a lot of sense because if you didn't know this and you're not here, but I do it every time. So that people might pass it on to others. Hi, Ben, you're with us. Norwalk. Norwalk C T dot gov forward slash meetings. And the C T is studded right up with their walk. There's no space. Members of the public may call in to participate. Callers won't be able to see the meeting participants. All participants will be muted on entering the meeting. To speak, dial nine on the phone and you will be called upon by the host of the meeting during the public comment session. Which happens with every hearing. All speakers must state their name and address. Comments must be kept on the topic of the agenda and are limited to three minutes. And if it's a complex issue, I might let that slide a bit. Anyone disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting, including by using threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be removed. Please find information using the link that I gave you a second ago. Members of the public who wish provide live comments may also use Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted upon entering to speak, click the raise your hand indicator and you'll be called on. By the host of the meeting during the public comment session, all speakers must state their name and address comments will be on topic. And that is repetitive. Members of the public who wish to provide of a comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance of the meeting. For these comments to be included in the record, they must be submitted by twelve P M. The day of the meeting. Please email Tammy Maldonado at Norwalk C T got go, then that is T Maldonado. At Norwalk C T dot gov. So I'm going to call it to order and we have five members. And let me just name them myself. Chairman Daniel Santac, secretary and vice chair, Keith Lyon. Steve Ferguson and Ben and Peter. And those are the five that will be with setting for each hearing. Sometimes we swap people in and out, but not tonight. Every hearing will be heard by those five. So with that, I'm ready to rock. We have Madam Secretary, the first one up. From last meeting carried over twenty-five oh three twenty. Dash oh one Kevin Rath. Can you take it from there? Just read, just read the. Item off the agenda. I'll do that, but in the meantime, be prepared to read what the staff memo says. We okay? Various to allow elevating existing rear deck and adding access stairs to grade within twenty-five feet of the mean high tide. Property located at twenty-two Harborview Avenue. You would read the staff report?
Okay. So I'll read the staff memo. The request applicant seeks variance to allow raising an existing deck within twenty-five feet of the mean high tide. A set of stairs from the deck to grade are proposed. The deck is attached to a house that will be elevated amid flood compliant. No additional variances are needed for the dwelling. Background, the home was constructed circa nineteen thirty. The home was damaged by flooding and permits were issued in two thousand and twelve to repair that damage. The deck has existed for many years. Analysis and findings. The new regulations include additional buffer protection of coastal resources, Article six point nine point five point D point one. All new construction substantial improvements and repair to the structures that have sustained substantial damage. Shall be located at least twenty-five feet landward of the reach of mean high tide. The existing deck is seventeen feet from the mean high tide. As such, staff cannot issue a zoning permit to raise the deck and add stairs unless a variance is granted. The proposal requires a separate coastal site plan review by the planning and good zoning commission. Please find attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activities for variances are not expected to have an adverse impact on coastal resources. This application requires two separate decision motions, one variance request, which must include the hardship declaration. And two, the coastal site plan review, which must include the declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with C C M A goals and policies. And will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. And we have the attached site plan memo from Amelia Williams. This was revised from last meeting and a new proposal reducing the deck and coastal buffer encroachment has been submitted for review.
Yeah. And we all still connected each other. I had Zoom shut off there for a second.
I think we're good.
Alright. Um. We have a presenter, by the way, as chairman invited the presenter to submit his revised plan. So we know it's coming. Go right ahead.
Okay, so we've took into consideration what the zoning commission or the variance board recommended to us. And we've reduced the, we've increased the buffer zone. We've redesigned the deck to make it more in line with the standards you guys require. The new proposed deck is twenty-one feet from the mean high tide bar. In lieu of the twenty-five feet required, only four feet less. And the furthest corner is twenty feet. I know there was another five feet. Under what the twenty-five feet you require is substantially, it's three feet more than the seventeen feet. And the way we designed the stairs now, they go around the corner, so they're much further away from the mean high tide line. We're hoping this is acceptable to you guys because we think we can make this work and we'll still have a deck that's usable. Yes, as you can see from the screenshot there, it shows exactly the new proposed deck and the distances as we stated. The rest of the distances like the far corners well above, well beyond the twenty-five feet buffers. I don't know if you have any questions or hopefully this is acceptable to you. If not, let me know.
Andy, we're not hearing you.
I think we lost his audio. Yeah, he might be a log off and log back on, I guess. Andy, you want to try logging off and logging back on, Andy, or? You wanna? He said two minutes, I guess.
I guess he's speechless because it's such an incredible design.
Exactly.
I didn't mean to overwhelm him. I apologize.
Well, while he's working on that, do you have a side by side of the the old and then new that you could show us?
The existing deck, existing deck in the?
Of the plans we saw last time.
Um. I do. I think Tammy has it.
Yeah, I can bring him up. I'm sorry. I was trying to, I'm trying to troubleshoot someone trying to get on as well through email. Give me just one second. So you want the old plan, right, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shut the other computer. Okay. Everybody hear me this time around.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's hope the computer number two works just peachy.
Okay, Ben, you want serve the existing condition survey or do you want the architectural plan?
I wanted, yeah, I wanted to see the the comparison of what we saw presented. Posed last month. Which is the difference to this one.
Yes. Here's the last one, yes. That's last month's rendition.
So this is the deck and then these would be the access stairs.
We took the stairs and moved them right to the house and then went around the corner down that way. So it did encroach the beginning to enlarge the deck. So it's. Much further away from the mean high tide mark.
You're talking about the change you made? Are you talking about? Change making to the last version?
The new proposed version.
Okay, got it. If you look. You did something to the stairs last time. This new version. I would say we're talking about twenty feet to the deck. And the requirement is twenty-five, but. You've made a substantial change and reduced the non-conformity by quite a bit. So. Something that I'm going to take into account.
Also, that twenty feet is just that one corner. The rest of it is substantially more than that, you know.
Yep.
Gradually gets further and further.
Yeah, I see.
Just one corner like that.
It's also a corner of the stairs, right? That that angle that's kind of funny leading, that's the actual that twenty-five, that's the twenty-five foot offset, right?
Uh, yes, that that angle is twenty-five feet. Yes.
Yeah. Right? So if you like extend that in either direction, you can see there's like the corner of the stairs that's over and then a little corner of the deck. It's also over.
It's the only because we had to have it wide enough to get a three foot set of stairs down to keep the code for the egress.
Yep.
What's the square footage of the deck, Mr. Rath?
Um, I don't know the, I can tell you a second. Hold on. It is eleven by. Twenty-two, eleven by twenty-two and with the little triangle. So it would be.
So it's a twenty-two width?
Twenty-two width, eleven feet deep towards the water. It's two hundred and forty-two square feet plus the triangle piece, which I can calculate out at. Five by three fifteen, about another fifteen square feet. So total of about two hundred, two hundred and sixty square feet tops.
And I realized we didn't want to wait around for planning and zoning commission to make any updates to their. To the, to the text, but had, was there movement on that Tammy on the, what was it? The April second?
Yeah, no, now, now it's going to, we've done some, another revision. We sent it to the commission prior or just after that meeting as a, just after the Z B A meeting in March as a referral. And then it will be on the May, I think it was May second meeting that it'll actually be voted on. And then it would be made effective shortly after if they, so under then, under the proposed text amendment. It would be allowed.
Right. The exception, exception A existing residences being raised to comply with section. Provided that there is no increase in massing, it would qualify under that exception.
Right. If they adopt it.
Yeah, but the key for me is the reduction of the non-conformity is substantial. And satisfies my need.
Appreciate that. That's what we wanted to do for you.
And it's probably like really one pier of that deck. And the corner of the stairs that are really like. A foundational element that's within that twenty-five foot setback, right? Like we're structurally probably at two peers.
Yes. Yes. We could cantilever it out of another couple of feet. So you might be able to get the pier in another two or three.
I don't know if that does anything for you for zoning, but.
I'm just saying if you're worried about the peers, but I don't think it'll make a difference. There's also a three foot seawall between the two of them, so.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other members? Well, the board.
No, thank you. Thank you to the Raths. I appreciate the the adjustment instead of going the long route. You were able to put it together and. Looks, looks a lot better.
I appreciate your guidance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't remember where you stood on this one. Are you okay now?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, I don't think we have to belabor this. I think we're pretty much good with it.
I think we have to open up for public comments. We, he, Raths did have some letters of support as well.
Yeah.
We've got to kick that off, yeah?
Do we want to do the pub? Public or the letters first?
You can save time. The letters are just from every single neighbor within a hundred feet. All that were notified was all sent us a letter in support. So. I don't want to belabor your time and, but that's basically what.
Alrighty. So I'll waive that. What happens normally is if things come in via email or to the clerk who can scan. Then we on the board all get them. So, but the public doesn't know it, but we can kind of summarize. We have a lot of letters of support.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's anybody that we've got about nine attendees, if there's anybody here who wishes to speak in support of this application, use the raise your hand feature. If you've, well, nobody's called in, they're all on, so yeah. We have no raised hands. So if you wanted to speak in opposition on this matter, you could raise your hand now. No raised hands.
Okay. There's no need for rebuttal because there's nothing to rebut. So I think we could close the hearing. We have five people, so we'll do use the normal process. So we'll have discussion and a vote later.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Next up is. Twenty-five oh four seventeen oh one, Jack and Deborah Smith. And secretary, if you jump in.
Yep. Just pull that one up. Uh, alright.
Real quick before that, I have a question for Tammy. Tammy, the the agenda usually has the the link to all the like application materials, right?
Yes, it does.
I, I. I'm not seeing that on this month unless I'm like just like not looking at the right place.
Um. So.
It's in usually like the first email that Tammy sends out in the month and then the agenda often comes like in a second email.
Yeah, I've got the agenda. I just don't see the link in the agenda to go to the page that has like all the different like, you know, plans and, you know, surveys and such.
Don't know that it is in the agenda. It's in the list of things to, that tells you what address. To come in on, but also the other way to get there is just go to the city site. Click on planning and zoning, choose Z B A. And then there'll be a link to the records of applicants.
Okay, I'm, I'm digging around and struggling, but I don't want to make that everyone else's problem. I'll keep looking.
Okay, keep looking. So we're all set. Daniel, go ahead.
Alright, twenty-five dash zero four one seven dash zero one, Jack and Deborah Smith, variance of a secondary front yard setback twenty feet required. Twelve point four feet existing and proposed to construct a new chimney at existing single family residence per table. Four point three point one dash C in C D dash one S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property is located at Three Gull Road District Six Block fifty-seven A Lot Twelve. Request applicant seeks variance to allow a new chimney to be built in adjacent location from the old chimney. Background, the home was built in nineteen eighty-five. There are associated historical variances for setbacks for the home and the deck. Analysis and findings. The regulations adopted in February twenty twenty-four and as amended currently specify. That a corner lot has two frontages. In this case, the frontage on Gull Road is the principal frontage with a required thirty foot setback. And the secondary frontage is along Pine Point Road and has a required twenty foot setback. Before the twenty twenty-four change in regulations, the setback was thirty-five feet from the center line of Pine Point Road. Now, the existing homes facade along Pine Point is non-conforming and the proposed chimney cannot be built without variance granted. Please find the attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activity is exempt from review by the planning and zoning commission. The application requires two separate decision motions, variance request, which must include a hardship declaration. And the coastal site plan review, which must include the declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with C M M A goals. And policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. And then we have the attachment from Amelia Williams.
Okay, who's representing?
Yes, hi, hi, I'm representing. This is Alexis Brooks. I'm from Lampert, Tui and Ruchi. I'm an attorney here and I'm here with the homeowners, Debra and Jack Smith. They live, they're, they're homeowners of Three Gull Road in Rowayton. And we're here to seek a variance of the secondary front yard setback. As stated, it is, the setback is currently at twenty feet, you know, per their regulation change last year. Due to it being a corner lot, and I'll show you with some photos and drawings. And it is right now, it is twelve point four feet existing. And the proposed new location of the chimney is simply a shift no closer to Pine Point. So it'll remain at twelve point four feet. Um, into the setback and it'll be five feet closer to Gull Road, which is well, which is fine. We don't need a variance for that. So really it's a repositioning of a chimney as they're doing a renovation. Can we see the presentation slides?
Yes.
Thank you. And as noted, you know, Three Gull Road, it's a legally non-conforming lot. It's important to note this. Right now it consists of, and it's always consisted of zero point one three two two acres. And it's a corner lot. So right now you can see the existing chimney. You can show a few more. This is as is right now. And if you go back to the original site plan. Which is in the beginning.
I'm talking about the plan, not the pictures, right? There we go.
Right now is the site plan. You can see the chimney right where the cursor is over. It is. Uh, that's as is right now and the building was thirty-five feet from the center line of Pine Point Road. We're now going to jump and you can see it's a corner lot. So as part of the hardship, this is a unique lot. It's, it's very small. It predates zoning regulations in the town of of Norwalk. So it's smaller than what is now. Possible today. The secondary front yard is Pine Point, the primary front yard is Gull Road. Can we jump to the comparison architectural drawing? This is good. So this shows the the red little box there is the existing chimney. And the proposed chimney is simply moving five feet forward towards Gull Road. No more into the setback along Pine Point Road. But because as of twenty twenty-four, the new regulations, we have to seek this, this variance. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to the architectural drawings. Jump forward a few slides. Yeah, keep going. Thank you. Okay, so this is one, one viewpoint of foundation shows the existing chimney and then it shows proposed. Can you zoom out just a little bit? Thank you. Okay, now go to the next slide. And this shows from the first floor architectural drawings again, existing, proposed. The relocation will allow the homeowners to have a point of egress in the, in the back. And from the basement, as you'll see, the, there are windows on either side in the basement of the chimney. And if you go to the next. Right, keep going. That shows actually the second floor, so that's important. It's slightly shifted five feet again. And now here's where you can see what it looks like today, the existing side. And then the proposed. And keep going. And this is particularly. Useful for you to see where the existing is today and then the transposed. The new chim, the proposed chimney. Where it will be. So it's slightly higher, but in sync with the height of the house. And what we're seeing today is more and more building of stone chimney. So if you go to the next slide. This is a good viewpoint as well. If you go to the next one. We'll see some examples of other stone chimneys. So it really is in sync with the stylistic details of Rowayton. And in particular, this neighborhood, if you keep going. So you know, clearly this is not, this slight modification is not, will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. It's in sync with the architectural details of the neighborhood. And the homeowners just respectfully ask that you grant this variance. It's the only variance that they're asking for. With this renovation. It won't have a material or adverse effect on the neighborhood. In fact, we believe that it will actually enhance. The and improve values in the neighborhood. And for that reason, we are respectfully requesting that you approve this variance application.
Let me just make sure I understand. Your hardship is you state. Due to the lot and the lack of meeting today's current requirements.
That's correct. So it is an undersized lot. It predates zoning regulations. It's a corner lot. And so it makes it a unique, that's what makes it a, a, a unique condition. That's really out of the control of the homeowners. And it's important to note that this board granted a variance based on those reasons too, those hardship reasons in two thousand and two previously to. So the homeowners at that point, not the current ones, but previous ones. Could renovate and enhance the size of the front deck. So. Clearly, you know, the, the, it's, it's been determined already to be. The size, the undersized lot and the, the corner lot have, have been determined to be a. Unique and feature that would cause a hardship for the, for the homeowners.
Any other board members with questions? None from me.
Questions for me.
Um, I have one question for Tammy. If they had chosen to keep the chimney. In its current location, but not, but still, you know, change the height of it or whatever with to go with the rest of the additions. Is that requiring of a variance?
No.
Only because it's shifting.
Right, vertical expansion is allowed, but even minimal changes, if you're, even though the point is that. They're not encroaching any further. Once you lose an existing non-conformity, it's gone. See, that's why they're, they're needing to seek the variance.
Rem is, Ram Bogatzinski is on the call. He's the architect. Rem is, Rem Bogatzynski is on the call. He's the architect of Three Gull Road. Rem, can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
I'd like to call on Rem and and hear from him on the, you know, decision process for making that shift.
Very well. So the the reason for moving the chimney. First of all, because of the improvements on the second floor. We're removing the roof of the building. So the chimney has to be kind of rebuilt anyway. And so that was one of the reasons to relocate the chimney. Also, the existing living room is, it's a very upper layout because the chimney is in the corner of the of the room versus in the center. And the Smiths wanted to take, you know, have have a good view from outside of the house and also inside the house. And we also shift the chimney because bedroom number two on the second floor, just to make it kind of flow better with the floor plan. Also have take advantage of the views toward the long and sound. And it's in our minds, it is a it balances the house because on the right-hand side of the of the house, we have an addition for the kitchen on the first floor. Then we also have addition on the second floor and the projection on the side of the house just feels more balanced with the chimney on the left. If you're looking from Gull Road and it also helps on Pine Pine Point Road because we have a large expanse of facade. And the chimney just helps to break up that visually. So it just, it looks a lot better with the chimney.
And architecturally, and we understand while that might not be a hardship, you know, centering a fireplace in the family room is you know, a common occurrence and something that would, you know, any homeowner would want to do. And, you know, we feel like this, this is a slight movement forward, no closer, you know, to Pine Point. It's already within that setback and it's not even moving an inch more into into it. There's not much, you know, there's no other changes that are requiring of a variance with this renovation. It's a very tiny lot. And you know, they've done what they can, you know, with within, within the, within the guidelines, within the regulations.
Any other questions from board members?
None from me.
Is the, are there any other materials that would be helpful for you?
I think that the illustration of the plan that shows the current location and your proposed location pretty much does it for me anyway. Tammy, do we have anybody out there that is raising their hand to speak in favor? Talking about people that want to join the meeting via Zoom.
Yeah, so attendees, if you'd like to speak in support of this application, please use the raise your hand feature. No raised hands.
I would like to note that there is, excuse me, there are five at least emails in support from neighbors that have been sent to Tammy and that are in our application.
Do you need us to read them or are you okay with proceeding?
Tammy, do you have them accessible?
Yeah, the the board received them as well, but I'm happy to read them and to whatever you want me to read them, we can read them. Or Danielle can if she likes.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Application or?
No, I sent them separately under a heading of of support or public comments.
Who's going to read them if if we read them?
I just have to find them.
Okay, I'll start. I'll do the first one, Danielle. Okay, so this says, Dear Tammy, I hope this finds you well. We are writing to you to express support for a recent variance request from our neighbors, Jack and Debbie Smith at Three Gull Road. They are requesting variance to replace their current outdoor chimney with a new chimney. We live next door to the Smiths adjoining lots. We are located at twenty-four Ensign Road. We know the Smiths well. They are very thoughtful neighbors and committed to the Rowayton community. We have no objection to them moving the chimney closer to Gull Road. We believe that replacing the chimney is not only additive to the property, but also beneficial to the neighborhood. We are fully supportive of this variance request and we hope you will consider and approve. All the best, Ben and Catherine Holmes. Can we keep going?
Yeah.
Do we need to keep going, Alexis?
Maybe one more.
So the next one is from Kathy Shay and Mark Berry at thirty-six Pine Point Road. We are writing in support of the application for a variance being made by Jack and Debbie Smith for Three Gull Road in Rowayton. We live down the block from the Smiths on Pine Point Road and pass by their home almost every day. We believe the plans for construction will significantly improve their property and will further contribute to the beauty of the neighborhood. It is our understanding that the variance being requested is to replace the existing wood burning fireplace with an energy efficient gas fireplace. The new chimney will be the same size as the old one, just moved over a few feet to accommodate the window wells and the new front door. The outside of the fireplace will be finished with river rock stone, which is consistent with the stone found in Rowayton area. According to the plans that were shared with us, this new chimney will improve the overall appearance of the house and the property. While we understand that this chimney is out of compliance with the zoning regulations, we do not believe that the minor changes suggested will have any adverse effect on the neighborhood or the property itself. And will in fact actually be an enhancement. The Smiths are good neighbors and are committed to our neighborhood. We believe the chimney construction is completely acceptable and therefore support the Smiths' request for a variance.
Thank you.
We have anybody opposing?
If you'd like to speak in opposition on this item, use the raise your hand feature. No raised hands.
Okay. There's no need to continue on. We have your information, but let me just check with the board before I close that. Is there anybody that has a further question at this point in time?
No question.
So I think we're set. And we'll close it. We'll discuss it later and vote on it later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next. I will read who it is and then we'll go from there. Danielle, twenty-five oh four one seven dash oh two. Thirty-eight S B D L L C. And variances, I'm sure that is like South Beach Drive, by the way, S B T. Variance is to elevate and alter existing S E R. And you take it from there.
Variance, front yard setback thirty feet required. Three point six feet existing slash proposed. And building height thirty-two feet required. Thirty-four point one eight feet proposed. Total height forty feet required, forty point one eight feet proposed to elevate and alter an existing single-family residence. Relocate and reconstruct an existing detached garage with the principal front setback fifty feet required, seven point nine feet proposed. Secondary front setback twenty feet required, point six feet proposed. Vary parking in the front setback thirty feet required and seven point nine feet proposed. And at a spa, fifty feet required and forty-four feet proposed per table four point three point one dash C in C D dash one S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property is located at thirty-eight South, South Beach Drive, District Six, Block Thirty-Six, Lot Sixty-four. Request applicant seeks variance to allow elevating and modifying an existing single-family dwelling, replace a detached garage, allow parking in the front setback and install a spa. The home was built in two thousand, replacing an older home. Variances were granted in nineteen ninety-nine to reduce the required setbacks for that two thousand construction. There are older variances for previous dwellings and the existing garage as well. Analysis and findings. This proposal includes elevating the home to make it flood compliant. While variances are not precedential, the board has in the past granted variances for properties within the flood zone. The applicant notes additional site constraints and practical difficulties that require variances for the location of the detached garage and spa. Please find the attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activities do require coastal site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. She also notes the activities for which the variances are sought are not expected to have adverse impact to the coastal resources. The, this application requires two separate decision motions. One, variance request, which must include the hardship declaration. And two coastal site plan review, which must include declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with C C M A goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. Attachment one, we have the site plan memo from Amelia Williams.
What I'm going to do as chairman is open two hearings. These homes are right next to each other. And I think the ownership is common. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that, Les Suchi. But it seems to me that there's some common information that could be given that applies to both. And that'll save us a little bit of time. So Danielle, if you would take the next item, which is
Forty-six.
Four to four one seven oh three. And it's called differently. It's called Plant Court LLC, but when I looked each up, it was the same ownership. Variance is to elevate.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, variances, front yard thirty feet required, eighteen point four feet existing and fifteen point seven feet proposed. Building height thirty-two feet required, twenty-nine point four feet existing and thirty-one point seven thirty-seven point one feet proposed. Total building height forty feet required, thirty-seven point four feet existing and forty-four point three feet proposed to elevate and alter an existing single-family residence. Vary parking in the front setback thirty feet required and eighteen point four feet existing, fifteen point seven feet proposed. Install replacement pool. Rear yard required fifty feet from the front property line. Existing forty-eight feet, proposed thirty-seven point three feet. Replace the retaining wall section five feet from the property line required. Zero feet existing and proposed per table four point three point one dash C. And vary twenty-five feet from mean height tide buffer, twenty-five feet required, zero feet existing and proposed. Per six point nine point five D point one in C D one S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property is located at forty-six South Beach Drive, District Six, Block Thirty-Six, Lot Sixty-three. Request applicant seeks variances to allow elevating and modifying existing single family dwelling, replace a pool, replace a retaining wall and allow parking in the front setback and vary the coastal buffer. The home was built in two thousand and thirteen. Previous variances were granted for the property. Analysis and findings. This proposal includes elevating the home to make it flood compliant. While variances are not precedential, the board has in the past granted variances for properties within the flood zone. The applicant notes the additional site constraints and practical difficulties that require variances for the location of the replacement pool, retaining wall, parking and coastal buffer. Please find the attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activities do require a coastal site plan review by Planning and Zoning Commission. She also notes that the activities for which the variances are sought are not expected to have an adverse impact to coastal resources. This application requests this application requires two separate decision motions. One, the variance request, which must include a hardship declaration. And two, coastal site plan review, which must include a declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with C C M A goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. And then we have the site plan memo attached from Amelia Williams.
Liz, you're representing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I appreciate.
Before you get going, before you get going, just let me say how we're operating because we don't normally open two. You cover all the common stuff and then we'll pick one of these at a time and go through them. And get the public input if there is any for each one separately. And at the end, we will discuss and vote on each one separately. Okidok?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. An omnibus presentation, but then we realize that each individual property needs to stand on its own and we need to present each on its own. That's perfectly fine. Great. So for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy. I represent the applicants and they are separately owned in separate LLCs. The applicants are thirty-eight S B D L L C. That is the owner of thirty-eight South Beach Drive. And Plant Court LLC is the owner of forty-six South Beach Drive. Also in attendance tonight are Mike, Michael and Christine Angelakis. They are principals of thirty-eight S B D LLC and Plant Court LLC. In addition, Oliver Cope and Olivia Rowan are present. They are the project engineers and you will hear from them in a little bit with more specificity about the two proposals. Craig Flaherty is the project civil engineer from Redness and Mead, who will present to you on drainage and coastal review. Haley Simpson, project engineer of Race Coastal, who will also present on coastal compliance. And then lastly, Caitlin Drury and Melissa Ravis are present. They are landscape architects with Hollander Designs. So if you have any questions of them, we'd be happy to answer them. There are two properties and each property in question has both a variance and coastal site plan application submitted. We would request at, I'd like to just remind you that if you have any questions during this presentation, we ask that you ask them prior to the close of the hearing. Because if you close the hearing and then have questions, we won't be able to answer them or clarify if we've been missed, missed. If we haven't been clear, we won't be able to supplement any information that may be necessary to answer your questions. And just some housekeeping information, the neighbors were within a hundred feet of the subject property were notified by certified mail of the date of time of this hearing on April third and the domestic return receipt cards for both properties and both applications were returned to staff today and should be in the permanent files. No neighbors have contacted me personally to discuss this matter. I believe that staff received one letter of support. There may be others, but no one has contacted me. Mr. and Mrs. Angelakis have also reached out to their neighbors personally to advise them of the pendency of the applications and what they plan to do. Lastly, the required signs were posted on the properties. Forty-six South Beach Drive has one sign because it is on one street. Thirty-eight South Beach Drive required two signs because it is a corner lot. Fronting on both South Beach Drive and Golden Court. I would also like at this point just to thank Ms. Maldonado for her assistance throughout this process. We've been, we've spoken to her on numerous occasions to gain her insight and interpretation of the new regulations and how those regulations apply to this particular property. Could, Olivia, if you wouldn't mind, could you screen share one of the photos? At this point, Mr. Chairman Conroy, do you prefer that we go forward with number thirty-eight or number forty-six? Do you care one way or the other?
I don't care which goes first, but just that you're separately discussed.
Yes, sir. We will make separate presentations for each. Okay, so let's proceed with, if you wouldn't mind, number thirty-eight South Beach Drive, which is a photograph of the property in front of you. This was taken this morning. This is the existing house at thirty-eight South Beach. It's District Six, Block Thirty-Six, Lot Fifty-four, owned by thirty-eight S B D LLC. It's, the property is eleven thousand three hundred seventy-eight square feet. It's in the C D one S zone, which used to be the old B residence. It is also in the flood flood zone and has both V E and A E fifteen-foot elevation designations. When this house was constructed, the flood zone designation to the property was thirteen. We have a variety of requests for thirty-eight South Beach Drive. And they generally relate to my client's desire to renovate, add some small additions, but most importantly, to elevate the house to meet the minimum flood elevation standards. The renovations proposed will exceed the twenty-five percent appraised value, so they are, would be considered substantial improvements and they would be necessary to then raise the dwelling to meet the minimum, not only the fifteen-foot minimum FEMA requirement, but the additional two feet required under the Norwalk zoning regulations. but the additional two feet required under the Norwalk zoning regulations. So the house must be elevated to at least seventeen feet. It's going to be, it must be elevated at least seventeen feet. It's going to be elevated as proposed a little more than that. And Oliver Cope and Olivia Rowan will describe why the additional elevation is necessary. On the right of the photo in front of you, you'll see a one car garage. That's an existing non-conforming garage. We propose to remove that garage and in its place, construct a new one car garage that will be set back into the property approximately eight feet. There is a substantial rock ledge in the back of the property behind the garage, making it difficult for that garage to meet the fifty foot offset from South Beach Drive, along with the twenty foot offset from Golden Court. Let me see. There is no additional floor or story or addition to the upper, the, the upper floor of the house nor the garage. The garage, as indicated, would be newly constructed and moved further into the property, thereby reducing that nonconformity as it relates to the existing garage. And overall, building coverage will be reduced by about thirty-four square feet. So the main dwelling in front of you, as was mentioned, there is a front yard variance requested, thirty feet is required, three point six is existing. And the new proposal would keep that three point six setback and that would be for chimney, reconstructed porch and two small additions. The building height thirty-two feet is maximum allowed. It is at twenty-five point nine and we're proposing thirty-four point one five. Parking in the front setback thirty feet required. There is zero existing today and we're proposing seven point nine feet. Let me see. There is also a proposal for a spa behind the house. A spa is an accessory structure that under the new regulations requires a fifty foot setback from the front, from the front property line. The spa will be behind the home, behind the proposed garage, well behind the front setback. But nonetheless, we are unable to meet the fifty foot setback for that proposed accessory structure. And lastly, the retaining walls that are proposed. You'll see some retaining walls on this photograph. They are existing. Most of that will be retained and replaced in kind. Some of it will be removed. There is a small section that will be new. It's my understanding and talking to staff that if retaining walls that exist that are nonconforming are replaced and re, and reconstructed in place. Generally, the same height and location that a variance is not necessary. But we have asked for it in any event, should there be an issue with interpretation of the regulation. So some of the hardships that have been articulated in the application are the fact that this is a corner lot. There's a significant rock outcrop and they, I guess it's the southeastern section of the property. There is both a VE and AE zone classification on the property. And this coupled with the application of the new regulations do make it very difficult and practically, both practically and physically to comply with the regulations. We have submitted a coastal site plan review application and we believe that because, and that then the reason for that is because there is, although less than a thousand square feet, the structure is located within fifty feet of a coastal resource. And that triggers coastal site plan review. We'll certainly if all, if this, if this variance application is approved, we will file that application with Planning and Zoning Commission in short order. No code adjacent coastal resources will be affected. Long Island Sound is on the opposite side of the property. No changes to the existing seawall are proposed and work is landlord, landward of the coastal jurisdiction line. One of the benefits of this proposal is to raise the structure to meet not only the fifteen foot FEMA and the seventeen foot with the addition of the two feet required by Norwalk planning and zoning, but have it be a little further, a little higher than that due to the construction of the house. As indicated in Redness and Mead's analysis, the proposal will minimize the potential for loss of property and life. There are no impacts to coastal resource systems, flows, erosion or sedimentation, biological communities, habitat or on adjacent properties. So the property, the project is consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act. That concludes my just overview for you, if you would like. We'd like to have Oliver Cope and Olivia Rowan further describe the proposal and answer any questions you have that are technical in nature, followed by Craig Flaherty of Redness and Mead. So if, if you would indulge me, Mr. Cope, can you take it over, please?
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your patience while we go through this and possibly repeat ourselves occasionally. Couple of things to note. Since thirty-eight is in the VE as well as the AE zone and it touches the VE, the entire house has to comply with the stricter code, and that's VE sixteen. So we have the base flood elevation of fifteen plus two feet of freeboard mandated by the town and then the additional two feet of structure. Because the VE requirement is not to the finished floor, but to the bottom of the, of the lowest horizontal structural member. Anyway. One other minor note, just there, there is currently a hot tub, which you can see where my, the cursor is here. And we're relocating it further landward onto the top of the rock outcropping. So Liz, I think you've done a pretty good job summarizing all of this. We could, in the, in the area of the, the eastern garage, current garage, which you saw in the picture, we've converted that the, sorry, the other end, east, east end there. That was, is a currently a garage. We're converting it to living space. And we've tucked the garage space that we might otherwise lose under the house, taking advantage of the fact that we're elevating. We've got some minor things I think were touched on before. Again, we, we pushed the garage on the west end further south. So we've increased the setback, even though it's not compliant, we still need a variance for it. But it's currently right on the road. So we pushed it south. And then we've expanded south to get some additional square footage for parking and also for mechanical equipment, which we also have to elevate above the base flood elevation.
Before you go, I'm trying to figure out Bill, where the front of the new garage location is.
I'm just here with just about eight feet back from the corner of the road.
Thanks.
And then we've made some other minor additions again at the east where the garage I was describing previously was, it's now converted to living space. But in order to get a stare in so that we can get up and down from the lowest level up into the house and to get room for parking, the piers that we need to elevate the house are, are conflicting a little bit. And if we need to talk about that more, we could get into the, the actual architectural plans.
Would it differ from the locations that the building is right now?
Sorry?
When I look at a plan to raise a house, one of the things I examine closely is whether the house stays within the original footprint. And if it
Largely it does.
If it changes, then I need to know why.
Okay. We're going up vertically. The changes that we're making that are additive are these red areas where we've pushed out a little bit to accommodate the plan, but water side of the house, there's a blue line, which where we have pared the house back again. And again, we have a, a more detailed floor plan where we can get into the specifics of this. But I think the ultimate point is there's an overall reduction in the footprint of this house of thirty-four square feet. It's, the bulk of the house is just going up vertically. We've made some minor changes.
Stop for a second. So I'm looking at red highlighted areas. And you know, extremely small, so I have to guess at stuff here. And I see blue highlighted areas. What's the significance of the red and the blue?
Blue is a reduction in existing square footage. And the red is the additions of square footage.
Right, thank you.
Is thirty-four square feet below the current.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Commissioner Conroy, just to clarify, the blue is the garage that I showed in the photograph that's almost on the property line. That's being with the proposed new garage being set back, that blue would now be eliminated. And the additional red are either behind the existing house proper or in the rear. Not intrusions further into the front setback. That three point six feet would remain. I don't know if that's helpful.
And there's some in the middle, you have what looks like a vertical blue piece. That's a reduction in the size of the home.
This is a reduction. This, there was an existing porch here, which we're removing. So it, it, it counted for building coverage. And we've replacing it with an elevator for the homeowners.
Right, thank you.
Do any of you have any questions for Mr. Cope or Ms. Rowan? From an architectural perspective? Okay, if not, Mr. Flaherty, could you come on and just walk through the stormwater management and coastal?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut with the firm of Redness and Mead with offices in Stanford and Wilton. So our role on this project was to provide site engineering design. And so with that, we have the same three set of documents on each property, a set of site civil engineering documents that describe the built environment, the changes in hardscape. Just indicate the grading on the property from existing to proposed. Indicate the stormwater management drainage plan. Indicate the sediment erosion controls to be deployed during construction to make sure that the disturbance of earth doesn't create any sediment erosion control concerns. And then the attendant details. The other two documents that we prepared for each application, one was the drainage report where we carefully looked at both the peak rate and volume of runoff from existing to proposed conditions, which I'll get into. And then lastly, we prepared the coastal area management assessment, looking at the coastal resources and making sure that we were not having adverse impact on any of the coastal resources present on or near the site. So I always like to start with an aerial. So this is thirty-eight here on the left. You will this is just Google aerial. And the types of coastal resources that are present include the beach, include developed shorefront in the seawall, include just general development. Residential, single family, in a residential, single family zone. The coastal waters, of course, Long Island Sound. And the flood hazard zone, which, which kind of overlays everything. And so these are the things that we need to determine whether or not we've had an effect on. So you know, we're not doing any work seaward of the seawall, the beach stays intact, the seawall stays intact. So those aren't an issue. For the flood zone, you've already heard that really the main purpose of this application is to make a house which is not compliant with the current standards of development and flood plains to be fully compliant with the standards of development in flood plains. So we're having a positive impact with, in terms of floodplain management under the camera view. And race coastal engineers will get into also the analysis to make sure that how we're changing that built environment doesn't inadvertently create a negative impact to the flood elevation or wave action itself as it occurs on and around the property. That kind of leaves coastal waters and the best thing we can do for coastal waters is make sure our drainage design is up to code and new standard and new, new Norwalk drainage manual. And so we've done a careful job to make sure that that is the case. I just switched to the PDF. Can you see the plans now? So make sure, can you see the plan? Okay, so yeah, sometimes I have to stop, share and then reshare when I switch between apps. So I will do that.
Tammy, do you have a full set of plans? Ms. Maldonado, do you have a full set of plans?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Yes, everything that I'm showing you has been submitted for the record with the initial application. So I was going to describe the drainage, but overall, one thing we did on this lot, both lots, is make sure that the proposed impervious coverage or hardscape is actually less than the existing impervious coverage, right? So that kind of makes my job easy at the end of the day. As the amount of runoff is going to be directly related to the impervious surfaces on site. So if we reduce the impervious surfaces, we're reducing the amount of runoff. We then have areas on site, which we vary specifically, like the, the walk along the seawall is going from concrete to gravel. The areas around a proposed fire pit are going to be gravel. And then the, any wood deck that we have is designed in accordance with Norwalk drainage manuals to have gaps between the deck boards and have a crushed stone reservoir below the deck to capture stormwater. So we followed all of these best management practices to have a net positive impact on the drainage. And we've submitted our drainage report with careful calculations performed and provided in the drainage report where we're indicating both a decrease in the peak rate of runoff from the site and a decrease in the volume of runoff from the site in all storms studied from the one year storm to the hundred year storm. So we've hit the targets on that and thereby have hit the target on the CAM assessment. So
Before you go on, where you talked about the addition of permable services?
Yes, sir.
Net, net?
Yes, sir.
Is there less runoff?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right, thanks.
Yes, sir. I think others have described other key features. I think it's worth pointing out. The proposed hot tub slash spa location is right where I'm indicating with the hand at the moment. You can see it is basically in an alcove behind the, the home and garage. And one of the primary reasons that we didn't want to shift it back another six or eight feet was a nice oak tree, right in this location, which if we jump back to the aerial for a second, you can see the canopy of here, right? So we want to stay well away from that root zone and, and, and give that tree as much respect as we can. And that's one of the reasons the spa was pushed a little bit forward. And it is set up in a little saddle in a ledge knoll, which exists behind the house, which then the ledge knoll provides a reason for why it was difficult to push the garage back any further, although we are improving that condition by eight, seven point nine feet based on the existing condition. And with that, I think that's the
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For you, Craig, and maybe for you or Tammy. How often is dredging required for this property, for the water, since we're talking coastal?
So we don't have a pond or a water course that we would propose to dredge if, if if we had a dock that we wanted to launch a craft from, you might get into dredging around that dock as sediment filled up. But there's really no reason on this property to want to have a maintenance dredge, for instance.
Thank you.
It's Steve, just
Excuse me a second. How do you get down to the beach?
There's a set of stairs. Right here, you can see the set of stairs on the survey from the upper side of the seawall down, this set of stairs right here.
Thanks. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have any further questions for Mr. Flaherty at this time? Hey, hearing none, Haley Simpson, could you come on and explain the analysis that Race undertook from the project?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name's Haley Simpson. I am the project engineer from Race Coastal Engineering. And Race, the, I guess the reason that Race was brought onto the project team was to look at the proposed improvements and determine whether or not they were flood zone compliant. We ran a coastal analysis on the existing and the proposed improvements. And we did determine that the proposed improvements are they do not create any adverse impacts with respect to flooding on the site or at the adjacent sites when compared to the effective FEMA firm. We took a look at the wave crest, wave run-up and wave reflection elevations on the site. And the existing and the proposed, and the proposed elevations do not increase when compared to the effective FEMA firm. The proposed improvements comply with the FEMA requirements, the City of Norwalk zoning regulations and the CCMA. An additionally, Race calculated wave loads acting on the proposed elevator at thirty-eight South Beach Drive, and these loads will be used by others to progress the design further. Furthermore, Race will be designing the foundations for the proposed houses. But at this point, the, the proposed improvements are in compliance with FEMA. And I welcome any questions if anybody has any.
Mr. Chair, do you or any members of the, the commission have any questions for Ms. Simpson? Hey, Caitlin Drury and Melissa Rivas are present from Hollander Design, they are landscape architects. If you'd like to hear from them, they'd be happy to do so, but if not, they're available for questions. Okay, any other questions for any of us on thirty-eight South Beach Drive project?
None for me. So ready to go on, let's get the public input on this item.
Okay.
Sorry, Andy, did you say open it to the public comment?
Yeah, I want to take them one by one.
Okay. So we already have one raised hand. Are we going to take support and then opposition? Okay, we have Yeah, we have a raised hand. But I'm uncertain whether they're speaking in support or opposition.
Okay.
Tammy, I, I have a question, Terry Atkins.
Hi, Terry.
Hi. So my name is Terry Atkins, one eighty-four Roatton Avenue. I have a question actually for you, Tammy. Because of the public reaction to the mass of the building that went up at McKinley and Roatton Avenue. I believe that the code was changed so that the garage was not considered in the future for a similar building, that garage would not be considered invisible, that it would count as a story, so that we won't have that kind of bulk again for a multifamily. Is that true also of the single family?
So, I mean, so that is, is that the boathouse project you're referencing?
Is that what they call it now? Yeah.
I'm not sure, it's, 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 I don't know, five or
One eleven, right?
Yeah, okay, yes. So, yeah, so that did have different standards, multifamily has different standards versus single family. The significant difference from the, in relation to stories and height, since we adopted the new regulations in February, that were effective February nineteen twenty twenty-four, is most recently in, I think it was the December ed amendment. We are allowing, so the lowest level is not a story as long as more than fifty percent of that is below the base flood elevation. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it, there's, in addition, there's for corner lots and this, this particular item is on a corner, so stories are measured from the principal frontage. Does that help clarify or not really?
Not really, because first of all, the the reason why this is being done has not really been explained. And so I'm seeing, just as a, as a member of the community and part of the RAS group, which is a community group that you're familiar with. I'm speaking only for myself now, I'm not speaking for the committee, but I'm trying to educate myself why they need to have this parking below. Obviously, they want to be quote unquote flood compliant, but that's only because they want to do work on the house. Otherwise, they're grandfathered in as they are, is that correct?
So they're not, I mean, all, the location was part, was already granted by previous variances. The necessity, if you, if you, whether the home is damaged or a choice to improve, there's a restriction that no more than twenty-five percent of the appraised market value from, it's a five-year look back. So it sort of limits to eight maintenance items or, or minor modifications. So that's, I mean, and we encourage homes to be raised, that's not the issue. Our, from a zoning perspective, we appreciate when folks want to bring their, their structures into flood compliance, right? That benefits the entire community. The, the case that the applicant is making, and that's their case to make, not mine, is that the site conditions and perhaps suggesting design constraints are necessitating this additional height request and some of the variances for location.
Certain height increases because we've, in the code, increased the height requirement by two feet.
Right, so that's, right, that's what the architect was talking about when he said freeboard. So that means that while the base flood years ago, FEMA requirement was just that the home be raised to the base flood elevation, later on, they raised it to plus one. Now we've adopted, because we sort of anticipate that this may be coming down the line, so we increase it to two. The height allowance under old code, so this is prior to February nineteen twenty twenty-four, in this zone, or I'm sorry, if any home in a flood zone was allowed one additional foot, so they could have done thirty-three to the mid and thirty-nine to the peak as of right. Now, across the board, we've allowed single-family homes to go to forty to the peak, which we now call total building height, and the mid is building height. And so, yeah, there's, the, the, their position is that the design necessitates at elevating the home, it necessitates the additional, the request for additional height.
Because they're just slightly over?
Correct.
Okay, so I understand there, we can have the discussion about if you break a rule, does it matter about how much you're breaking the rule? But anyway, this goes back to my original question about stories, because I do believe that the two and a half stories still applies. Is that correct?
But the lowest level is not deemed a story.
Because it's a garage.
Or any, any
Or is it because of the fifty percent below?
Right, it's because, right, it's because most of it occurs below the BFE, right?
Okay. Thank you for explaining.
Sure.
Something, Terry, you have to know is that we don't necessarily approve the plan as it presented. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Right. Right. I, yes, I'm going to be interested in your comments for forty-six South Beach, yes.
So if we had anyone, I'm sorry, Terry, were you?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay.
But I'm staying for the next one, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, so if we have anyone else who wishes to speak, you could raise your, or please use the raise your hand feature. Okay, we have one more, this is, or an additional one, this is Lori. And Lori, you should be able to talk now. You have to unmute. Hi, Lori.
Hi. I just have a question.
Would you give us your address, please?
Sure, Lori Pasqualini, forty Pine Point Road.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori.
I just have a question, in terms of the approvals that go through, whether it's planning and zoning in the building permit, is there ever consideration of the already approved construction in a neighborhood that would look at that at some point there's oversaturation of construction going on? You know, there's a lot going on right now, and there's three projects that are in the Belle Island Pine Point neighborhood that are on the agenda for tonight. And I just am curious, how does that come into consideration by both planning and zoning and building department, if you have that information? Thank you.
So if anyone can seek a variance, we can't prohibit a variance request. As long as the application is completed appropriately and all the documents are provided. You know, we accept five applications each month. If I don't have a way of controlling variance requests beyond you know, like I just said, the, the five per meeting. I think it's, it's probably coincidental that we have
Let me jump in, our mandate is to deal with variance requests and appeals. We're not outside of that, we don't do planning. We don't set code, we don't change code. And each person that has a reason to come to us is allowed to come to us.
And that's provided through state statute.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we had anyone else, if you could use your raise your hand feature? No additional raised hands, so I'm going to lower your hands, Terry and Lori, just so I can then poll to see if any, any
It's a good idea, because she wanted to talk possibly at the next one.
Yeah, so I guess actually those were somewhat oppositional, so we did have one email support. This is the last opportunity for anyone in attendance to speak on this item, on this item.
I think if you have one, maybe it's a good idea to read it, Tammy, or whoever should read it.
Tammy, do you have? I do, it's, it's short. All right, this was Yep. This is addressed to, this is actually sent to the attorney's representative and addressed to Christine and Michael, thank you for your letter, I just wanted to say good luck with the project and that I can't wait to see the beautiful homes up safe and sound. Certainly will be a wonderful place for your family for years to come. Looking forward to seeing you around Belle Island, best Doug. Doug is, sorry, this is Doug Brody. I'm uncertain of his location.
Thirty South Beach Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Look at that.
Procedural question for the chairman and for Tammy. Not having done my ten years or more on this on the board. Would we go to the variance request individually, or do we wait till the end of both?
Ask your questions per property, when each property is presented.
Okay.
When we get the discussion, we will discuss them separately. And we will vote on them separately. We offered to have them both presented because they're right next to each other, and if you want to talk about the location they're in in general, we could do that one time.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
I should add Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that the letter of support was for both thirty-eight and forty-six, for the record.
I have a quick question before we move on from this property. Was parking considered additional parking spaces provided under the raised area of the house? You know, we have one in the existing garage and one that was at, under the house, and that was actually shifted over. I'm wondering if there was that second parking spot considered also under the raised area of the house in a way that would actually allow for the elimination of the non-conforming detached garage?
I think that's probably a question best answered by Oliver and Olivia. And as they come on, I just want to make one comment, the garage that's proposed, and this is in response to one of the comments raised by Ms. Atkins, that proposed replacement garage is fully compliant in terms of height and stories. But I will leave it to Mr. Cope and Ms. Rowan to explain the rationale behind recreating the garage in a more zoning compliant location.
Oliver, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, just trying to make sure that I vocal. Maybe the, we could put up the the elevation of the house, just the existing and proposed.
Front?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go.
Which is the garage, which is what you're proposing and what it is currently, right?
This is the existing down below, and this is the proposed up above. So we had a lot of difficulty, not a lot of difficulty, but we did have to get steps to come up to this house. So in order to fit another parking space below the, the current first floor would have been difficult, we have this chimney here, we have a lot of structure. And we thought by reducing this non-conformity in the garage, that we could still park a car here and, and the other car park.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just broadly thinking about bulk, especially when we're talking about, you know, very large homes going up what's essentially an entire additional story. And the kind of mass of this house from the street, of which the detached garage is not a small component of it. And the consideration, I was, I did, I looked at the basement and foundation level plan pretty closely. The thing I was considering was more an additional parking space all the way on the left side of the elevation. To get that extra space, and then ultimately, while I think we understand the height requirements of you're basically taking that existing structure and raising it up to be above the BFE. But the garage part does seem kind of, to me at least, a kind of while the height and number of stories is, is not is not necessarily an issue because it is existing. It does seem like an opportunity to make some trade-offs in terms of the kind of bulk of the new proposal.
One of the other things that may come into play, Commissioner Sanchik, is with what you're suggesting, the, there may be an issue with respect to the driveway width from a zoning and/or a public works perspective. Or if there are two independent driveways, that I'm almost certain would be an issue with public works for two curb cuts directly next to each other. But we, I have to admit, I did not look into that further since we came with the plan before you and, and thought that the proposal was a better proposal than existed today, recognizing, of course, that the we can, the new, the new garage is replacing that which already exists, but making it less non-conforming.
Yeah, I mean, I, I totally agree in that the curb cut and like width of existing driveways was exactly the kind of technical questions I was looking to understand if that had been thought through and then rolled out or maybe still an open area to seek. You know, we are talking about a big, a lot of bulk and a lot of variances, so.
Well, I appreciate the, the, the input here and, and also the concern. How, you know, the, the choice to elevate was made for us by, by the code change because of the, the very small amount of money you could spend on renovation without triggering elevation. Elevation, as I think has already been said, is a good public policy decision because it reduces the hazard for everybody, not just this particular house. But it's less of a danger to those around it because it's compliant with the regulations. We looked at this location for the garage as frankly, better and more sensitive because it allows some landscape space to the left and an easier access as you turn into the garage or, or come out of it, rather than being hard up against the property. or, or come out of it rather than being hard up against the property line to the, to the east. So I think from an aesthetic point of view, you could make competing arguments for one strategy for the other. I don't think that the bulk of the building is any different, whether the garage is more or less in the same position on the east side as it is currently. And on the, on the west side, we pushed it back and it's less wide than the existing one. So I, I think those are all mitigations. We can, we can start looking at the landscape plan later if we, if that becomes important. But the other thing is.
Let me ask you a question, Oliver, let me ask you a question. Currently, you're able to park one car in the garage?
The, the, the current garage. I think. One car in, in each, the one that's further east, you, you might be able to put a Mini Cooper in front and a, and a compact car at the back, but.
But generally speaking, a full sized car, you have room in the current one for one?
One. In the current home, you have two, two garages. So you have.
Right. So it's two full sized car. And then when you end up with this, you end up with two full sized car.
That's right.
Danielle, one of the things we want to accomplish is making sure that we get cars off the street. So as we chat with these folks, we hope to see them come up with a plan that accomplishes that.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting taking a parking space away, only moving the one that's on plan east to be right adjacent to the one that's on plan west. And additionally, the mechanical space that was added over the garage on the east. Understand that there are some components there. But it does seem to be quite a lot of extra space over the garage there. And I think there's a section or something that shows a bit of that with the, the, the dormer added that opens up to a kind of nice deck overlooking the water there for a mechanical space.
Well.
That's got a, we have a generator there as well as the air conditioning, heat pump, compressors. It's, it's not hangout space.
Okay.
It's because we need to be up at seventeen. We have to be up at seventeen with our mechanical equipment. So we thought it would be better if we could hide some of it than have it out up at seventeen, elevation seventeen.
Understood.
Good look. We can discuss it further when we get into the discussion period, but I want to make sure everybody on the board, all five members have had all their questions on this property answered.
I've got one. The, the spa, can you show where that is and, and what's the hardship behind that?
Want me to do that one again?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Craig.
Sure.
Or do we, do we want to use a, the, well, it's fine. Craig, yours, yours is just fine.
Okay.
As he's doing that, Mr. Commissioner Hamper, this spa is an accessory structure. Under the new regulations, it must be fifty feet from the property line. It's both the front setback plus another twenty feet. And we're proposing it and he'll describe it far better than I in an area that seemed to make most sense. Given the, given it being hidden by both the house, looking at it from South Beach Drive and also from the angle at the corner of the proposed garage. I'm sorry, Craig, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. So I, I'm just highlighting in this red line, the, the principal structure setbacks. The spa is right here. Okay. So it meets the principal structure setbacks, but it's a bit shy of the extra twenty feet, which would be about in here. And the, the primary reason we can't just push it back is that oak tree I talked about, which has a canopy. A very large oak tree has a canopy over the whole rear yard. So we don't want to put it within the root zone of that oak tree. So we, we tucked it up and elevated it a little bit on this ledge outcrop that it exists.
Craig, can you show them where the existing one is?
Yeah, we thought it was a better, also a more sensitive location than the existing one, which is right here. You know, just in terms of view sheds from both Golden Court and view sheds from the, the, the water. That is actually farther away from the water than the existing one. And, and again, kind of tucked in, what is this alcove created by the, the structures around it?
Are there any restrictions about differences to the, the, the water line? For the spa?
Well, there is. There's a twenty five foot new cam setback that.
Commission. Okay. I, I wasn't sure if this, if this would fall under that rule.
I believe it's outside.
Did earlier that we, that we talked about.
Yeah, this.
Tonight.
Yeah, this complies with that standard. And it's also the, the one thing that is, is relevant is it's outside of the velocity zone, which comes in even farther than the camp setback.
How are we doing on questions? I've got one last one. Building height is forty feet and what looks like about three and a half inches. Why do we need the three and a half inches?
I think that's because that's the math that we have. If we, if we raise the, it to meet FEMA and the, and the freeboard requirement, the existing ridge goes up to forty point one eight or whatever.
Yeah. Now, we, the zoning code adds two feet from thirty eight to forty to accommodate the additional two feet required. And I'm never a fan of going above allowed building height.
There's two components of the zoning code that apply here that Oliver described previously. It's not just plus two feet to the finished floor. In, in this particular case, now that a, a portion of the structure touches the velocity zone, it's plus two feet to the underside of the structure that holds up the house. So it ends up requiring that frame to go up even farther.
All right. Well, I want you to take a look at it and see if you can get rid of the three and a half inches.
But I honestly, I, if, if we have an existing building and we don't change, take the roof off and reframe it completely for those three inches, we are stuck between the proverbial rock and a hard place.
In the past, Mr. Chairman, you have seen situations in which applicants have come before you elevating a house and adding space above. And I know that the commission has looked askance at that. This is the same house, no additions on the upper floor. It's just being elevated so that we can meet the FEMA code and the two feet. And the way the house is constructed, it's, it, it's a practical difficulty for us to accommodate the maximum height set forth in the new code.
I still want to look at the plan a little more carefully before I said that that's fine. You know, from dealing with me for a long time, that I like us to stay within the footprint that exists and to stay under the max height. Now, there are oddities that can crop up that can force us to go over the max height. But if it's avoidable, I'd like it to be avoided.
Well, may I make two suggestions? First is, of course, we will review and if there is anything we can do to comply. I'm certain that Oliver and Olivia have already done that. But I would hope, since you have questions and Commissioner Sanchik also have questions, that those questions will need us to review and, and to evaluate. So I don't believe, I think I'm hearing that you're not in a position to move forward since those questions need to be answered. Am I hearing that correctly or am I?
I want to know, I want, I want to know the possibilities and then we could add it as a requirement. Anyway, I don't want to be, you know, obtuse and I don't want to become onerous. But I do like to see us stay within those bounds. Here's why. Once FEMA decided everything had to be pushed way up in the air and to be able to qualify for flood insurance. Norwalk in general has been kind about allowing homes to go up in the air. One of the things I didn't want to see happen was that we create the Great Wall of China. That houses expand to each side, front and back, and then go up where you had a, let's say a half roof story. And then you go to the full height, all the way across the house, they had a giant stone brick. And then next to that is another giant stone brick and next to that is another. I think that that's poor planning and I think it's not good for the community. So that's why in general, I've asked that we stick with that. Now, have there been exceptions? Yeah, there have been exceptions. There are times that that can't be met. But in general, I think that's a good principle.
And I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Conroy. But in this circumstance, that's not what's being sought. There is no second or upper floor addition that would increase the mass. It's, it's strictly a function of the, the regulations. But we can take a look and we can come, either come back or share with staff the.
Okay.
Their analysis.
No, Liz, that's good. But I just wanted you to understand why.
I understand. You've been very clear on, on that position, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to jump in to kind of piggyback on what Andy's saying. You know, this property is a, what is it, thirty four square foot reduction and basically surface coverage of, of the property net. But I, I do think, you know, asking for this number of variances and this big a project, I think, you know, where we can reduce existing non-conformities can also be a good way for us to see an easier path to, to some of the, some of the variances where we're just kind of, you need a variance because you're shifting, you're trading a chimney here for somewhere else or, or those kinds of things. And if there are places in the property where we can actually reduce existing non-conformities to bring the property more in line with the zoning regulations, that's also a good approach.
Yeah. Danielle, I'm a big fan of the concept. Do we have any further questions from our board members? Is it, and we've already, unless I've fallen asleep here, we've already been to the public. And it might be time to move on to the next property. Did you have anything further you wanted to add, Liz?
The only thing I, I have to add is at some point, I would just like to have final time for rebuttal and or summation on both. And I know you want to move on to the other. It's already late. You have, you have to get through whether you're going to decide or keep the hearing open or what your pleasure is. But we do want to wrap up and have some just technical comments at the end, if that's okay.
That's fine. You ready to go with the next item?
We sure are. Absolutely. So.
Are you leaving?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission again. The comments that we made at the outset that related to both thirty eight and forty six, of course, will be made part of this record. So the forty six South Beach Drive, if Olivia, you could share the two photos that were taken this morning while she's doing that. This is a very similar circumstance. We are looking to make some additions to the structure. That's, that's the one photo head on taken from East Beach Drive this morning. That's the house that was constructed several years ago. And that's an existing shed outbuilding that is right up against the property line on South Beach Drive. The building to the right is thirty eight South, South Beach Drive that you just discussed. So again, we're not proposing any changes, no, no additions to the upper floors. It's largely once again to elevate the structure to meet the minimum FEMA and city zoning requirement for minimum flood requirements. Because the proposed renovations will exceed the twenty five percent substantial improvement rule necessitating the elevation of the structure. Once again, the elevation by FEMA is fifteen. Norwalk requires an additional two feet. The structure is then going to be elevated up above seventeen to somewhere close to nineteen. It's also important to note that in the photo below, if you scroll down just a little bit, once again, Olivia, the structure that exists there, it's not a garage, it's just a remnant structure from past when the, when the different structure was, when different dwelling was on the house, that structure is proposed to be removed in its entirety. It's approximately three hundred and three hundred square feet, plus or minus was my guess, seventeen by twenty thereabout. And it is a completely non-conforming structure. It sits right up against the property line. And that structure will reduce the amount of coverage that exists on the site. This property is, I'll go back just a second. This property is twenty thousand five hundred twelve square feet. It too is in the CD one S zone. And it also has the AE and VE fifteen foot line on it. It was B residence zone prior. There were variances granted for this property over the years. And I think those related to the front setback in coverage, excuse me, front setback and enlarging the kitchen over the second story. So the proposal with that Olivia and Oliver will present to you. Again, we have front setback variance for thirty feet that is allowed, eighteen feet is existing, fifteen point seven is proposed. And that's for the new front entrance and garage. Building height is thirty, thirty two permitted, twenty nine point four existing, thirty seven one, thirty seven point one proposed. And that's a function of elevating the structure to meet FEMA and local code. Total height forty permitted, thirty seven point four existing, forty four proposed. There is also a coastal setback variance request that affects this property. And that is a twenty five foot from the mean high tideline. The house is currently non-conforming as it relates to that setback. This relates to the pool and patio that are proposed. And those are pool and patio and expansion of an existing balcony. Those were already permitted, but not yet constructed. That vary, that regulation may change next month, as has been previously explained that the zoning, planning and zoning commission is considering relaxing the twenty five feet and making it something less than that. In addition, we are suggesting if the board, if it's the board's pleasure to remove the cupola on the top of building to somehow to add to reduction in the mass. Mr. Flaherty, if you wouldn't mind calling up the aerial, that would be great. As he's doing that, the, the property is a very oddly shaped lot. It's probably one of the more oddly shaped lots I've ever come across. It's not a rectangle. It's not a square. It's not a trapezoid. It's some odd kind of octagon-ish shape. It has South Beach Drive circling in the front, which then heads, travels north onto East Beach Drive. And this property intersects the South, South Beach turnaround with the South Beach straightaway traveling north, south, east, west, north, south. So Craig is, had just outlined it and you'll see it's, it's a really odd shaped lot. And that creates all sorts of challenges. The square on the left of the property underneath the S beach DR, that's the structure that would be removed in its entirety. There are also variances related to the pool. There's an existing pool right now that he's circling. The CD one S zone permits accessory structures in a rear yard, again, fifty feet from the property line. We're proposing forty fourth, thirty feet, oh, excuse me, we're proposing forty four feet. And that's clearly well behind the thirty foot front setback, but it intrudes into the fifty foot setback for accessory structures. There are also some retaining walls similar to the thirty eight South Beach Drive proposal that will be removed and reconstructed in kind. There's one retaining wall, I think that is going to be relocated that, that may require the five foot variance relief that we have asked for. But again, my understanding by staff is that retaining walls that are to be reconstructed generally in the same place and height, no variance is necessary. But since it's a new regulation, we decided to seek relief just in case that that's, that becomes an issue. Again, this property is within the coastal area management zone and a coastal site plan review is required. Because even though it's less than a thousand square feet to be constructed, it's within fifty feet of the coastal resource. There is no impact to adjacent coastal resources. There are no changes to the existing sea wall. All work is landward of the sea wall. And we don't, and the benefit of this project, just like thirty eight South Beach is to raise the structure to meet or exceed the minimum flood elevation. That's not only beneficial for the applicant, for the neighborhood, but also for the city and its insurance rates. Again, I'd like Oliver and Olivia to walk you through the proposal. We're happy to answer any questions along the way and then they will be followed by Mr. Flaherty and then again by Haley Simpson. Mr. Cope?
Thank you. And I think we should stick at the, this, this, this is a, this is a good place to start and then we can go to the, go to the plan. First of all, as Liz mentioned, the blue dashed and hatched rectangle in the left corner is. First of all, as Liz mentioned, the blue dashed and hatched rectangle in the uh, left corner is uh, uh, we're removing that structure in its entirety. And that's part of our desire to kind of expand the, the, the sort of space that we were going to be able to plant in um, adjacent to thirty-eight, and not have that building right on the street. Um, so in terms of mitigations, I think that that one's not only a benefit to uh, forty-six overall, but also benefits thirty-eight and, and, and just passing by. The uh, the other additions, again, the red is uh, are the expansions. And the blue um, are um, um, just, Liv, you'll have to refresh my memory. We have a balcony above already where the blue rectangle is on the south side of the house. Uh, right, and we, we also have an existing approval um, from our first foray to planning zoning when we had a a smaller proposal before we um, went to the floodproofing. So um, everything else is fairly minor except for the pool. And that pool, because of FEMA, uh, we're elevating above the base flood structure and all, and we're allowing uh, any stormwater to pass beneath it. And I think uh, Race is in a better position to discuss that than I am. If we go to the uh, um, overall site, you can see the contours on the east side of the property. Uh, that's all rock ledge, so we're quite constrained about engaging that much as thirty-eight is on the east side. So we're really pushed into this location for development of the site. That's why the house ended up where it was originally. Can we go to the, the uh, first floor plan? Or the lowest level plan? Okay.
Tell us the color code.
Sorry?
Tell us the color code.
Okay, okay, so the red is addition. Uh, there's not much subtraction here except for the underlying structure of the house, but within the body of the house. As a consequence of raising the house, we need more stairs to get in. And that pushed, put pressure on um, us and the house for the, for the two garages that exist under the house. So by the time we got the piers in place and the stairs in place, we didn't have the width we needed for the garage any longer. So we pushed the garages left and right a bit. And then brought the roof line down and swept it over them, so we stay with the spirit of the way the original house has developed. And we can show you that in the elevation as well.
Okay, so that's the only significant thing, what's the, is that a porch? On the upper left?
On the upper left, that's a, that's an existing chimney. And it's a wood chimney with metal flues. And we changed it to a, a masonry chimney, and we've added that on top as well on the master bedroom above. Uh, there are no setback issues for that addition. Um, and, and actually with this house, we're about a thousand square feet under uh, the maximum that's allowed. Uh, the maximum allowed is five thousand one hundred and twenty-eight feet. And this is house with our additions, I think, is at forty-four hundred and change. The existing coverage is four thousand forty-three. So uh, we, we certainly haven't maxed this out by any stretch.
And the proposed coverage also takes into consideration removal of that structure adjacent to South Beach, which not only removes the non-conforming structure, opens up a view easement, but it also contributes to lesser coverage. Any questions for Mr. Kope or Ms. Rowan? Or Mr. Flaherty, I apologize. Okay, then perhaps Haley, uh, could you come back on for Race's analysis?
I can, I just do quickly because I didn't say it out loud for forty-six. Um, the same results apply. Uh, we analyzed the coastal resources. We went through the checklist of whether or not uh, we would have potential impact of those coastal resources. Uh, and, and, and in the same terms, we do not. Uh, and we're reducing coverage, reducing the peak rate of runoff, reducing the volume of runoff. So drainage gets better, water quality on the coastal resource gets better.
Hey, Haley?
Yep, um, okay, so we performed the same analysis for forty-six as we did for thirty-eight. Um, that analysis was to make sure that all the proposed improvements are um, in compliance with FEMA regulations, the city of Norwalk, and the C C M A. Um, when we looked at the existing conditions versus the proposed conditions, we again looked at the wave crest elevations, the wave run-up and the wave reflection, and determined that the proposed conditions don't create any adverse impacts when they, with respect to flooding on the site or the adjacent sites when compared to the effective FEMA firm. At forty-six South Beach Drive, we calculated wave loads that are acting on the proposed pool and the elevator. And those wave loads will be used by others to progress the design forward. Again, we will be, Race will be designing the foundation for this house as well. And I welcome any questions, if you have them.
Are you making any changes to the roof structure?
No. I mean, the one thing is the um, clients are willing to remove some of the one or two of the cupolas.
Okay, would you have one of them left or not? I don't understand the removal just yet.
Well, let me share the.
And my other question is, is that pushing the number up to the forty-four and change? Is the cupola the issue?
Uh, no, the cupolas are not the issue. Um, so when you raise this house up as required by FEMA, that, we haven't touched the roof at all, that is the number that we get to. Because the structure is at seventeen, the bottom of the structure, so um, they are, they're considering removing this, this uh, cupola, but the cupolas are not um, part of the height. Currently part of the height, because that, they, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, Andy, the section on page thirteen shows the height.
But you're keeping the one cupola on the major part of the house.
I think we're prepared to take them both off.
Okay, I think I might like that. It's a give and take process.
Yes, I'll, I'll trade you two cupolas for point one eight feet on thirty-eight.
After I stop laughing, I'll, I think I'll probably make that a good trade.
Are there any other questions for anyone who presented this evening?
Um, I have some questions about the pool. So if, can we look at that plan? I don't know who's sharing.
Yeah, it's a great question.
I don't know who has the best plan for it, but the one with the red and blue would be good.
I'm happy for us, Craig.
Uh, I'll start, we'll start with mine and see if that answers the question, if not, we have, we have others. So uh, this is the site plan. Uh, you can see here, I am outlining the um, existing pool. And if I call up uh, the zoning plan, uh, basically the velocity zone cuts right through the middle of the existing pool. So in addition to moving it farther away from the water, uh, uh, we're also moving it outside of, of the velocity zone.
So I guess my first question is, if that was just to come up in place, does that reduce the variance requests, or it's not even allowed to be there because of the velocity zone?
It, it, well, that would uh, be, be raised, but I believe the uh, wave run-up and wave analysis uh, would not work for that pool in the velocity zone.
Even if it was raised?
I- in place, yeah, we want to get it out of the velocity zone, and it, and it, and it does um, there's a corner of it, you can see right here, that does go into that fifty-foot yard accessory uh, setback, although, you know, as much as uh, uh, the, the relocation does getting it out of the velocity zone.
Okay.
Yeah, so the way of the pool, the proposed pool is working now is that it's going to be on piles. So it's going to allow some water to be able to go underneath it. Um, and the location that it's at right now allows that water to happen and to be able to flow underneath.
And again, the removal of the shed allows more landscaping in the front, which is um, you know, part of the mitigation for the pool being pushed in that direction.
Okay, and that, the raised patio and the, is that a planter along the edge that's within the thirty-foot front yard setback?
Yeah, so this is deck, open jointed wood deck.
Right.
Uh, and then this, uh, yeah, remind me, um.
Planting.
Planter, yeah.
And Tammy, since that's all raised, that's all considered an accessory structure?
So, that is, I mean, the deck, the deck, because it's attached to the house, is structurally part of the house. So it gets the benefit of the principal structure. That planter, I mean, I, I would say we would deem that landscaping, um, it's not really structural, it's not. It's not serving a, a support purpose, is it? For the deck?
No.
No.
I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is that entire zone that's, you know, encroaching on that front set, setback, or we're asking for a variance for that?
Can you expand that so we can see it a little better?
Maybe Caitlin, could you bring up the landscape plan? That would probably define.
Everyone hear me and see my screen?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Uh, I'm Caitlin Drury with Hollander Design, we're the project landscape architects. Um, Melissa Rivas also from Hollander Design is on the call, if you have any questions. Um, we'd be both happy to answer them. Uh, what you can see in the rendered plan here is the proposed pool and deck. And the planter on the north side of the pool here is at the same level as the pool to provide some screening and landscaping at that level.
The planter's not holding back any earth?
No, it's at the level of the uh, pool deck, which is the same as the covered porch that you see here with the uh, existing chimney.
Yeah, so we would deem that a landscape feature, Danielle?
Okay, and the deck, right, is?
I mean, the deck is, is structural, it's part of the, but that was, was that existing deck before there?
Not in that specific location.
So we didn't identify that?
Uh, you can see it um, very faintly up in the gray here, that's the existing pool and the stone terrace pattern that you see hatched here, and the existing stair to the front yard and a retaining wall that's holding up the pool terrace uh, at roughly ten point seven, which is the same as the existing porch, so we're keeping, we're maintaining that relationship between the porch and the pool.
And I'm, to clarify, um, this is slatted deck, or this is?
Correct, it's open jointed with a crushed down reservoir below.
The existing one is stone, I'm sorry if I misspoke there.
No, I don't think you did, I just was making sure I was understanding. So Danielle, the concern is that we've overlooked a need for variance for the deck as well, right? I see your point, yes.
But there is a front yard setback um, that probably encompasses that intrusion. I don't think this, I don't think that area is further into the setback than what's proposed for the main dwelling.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
Oh, does it?
It should be incorporated and, and part of it.
Yeah, the, the, it's, it's twenty point five feet uh, to the planter. Uh, so a few more feet uh, to the deck. And from the, from, from South Beach Drive to the front of the principal structure is fifteen point seven, and that is a variance that we requested. It's a front yard variance.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion, if you'd be willing to entertain one? I'm, in light of the questions that have been asked both for thirty-eight South Beach and a few for forty-six, would you entertain keeping this hearing open to give Olivia and Oliver the chance to consider what Commissioner Sanchik has suggested, what you have suggested on both, and what other questions may have come up that we just can't give you um, an immediate answer tonight? And I would, I would prefer that uh, they have the opportunity to evaluate what your suggestions were, what your questions were. Would that be something you would entertain for both of these properties?
I certainly would, as chairman. If you want to do a continuance, I might ask our members as well if they agree with that.
I certainly agree with that.
For example, on thirty-eight South Beach, I just made a representation that perhaps the driveway comply with DPW standards.
You're good with the, a delay of one month?
I'm good.
Yep.
And Danielle, I think you're good. And then Ben, is that something you would entertain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so did we want to have, we have a attendee raising their hand. Did we want to have public comments in this session, or hold that over?
I, you know, I'd rather get the comments in so that nobody says we weren't allowed to comment. And we get them all in, and, you know, I'm not going to be repetitive. We're not going to go next month and repeat everything. Um, we will deal with the open issues only.
Okay, so again, for the record, we had one letter of support that addressed both properties from the neighbor at thirty South Beach, I believe. It was Doug Brody, um, and then so we're going to open it up um, for public comments, but I'm going to lower hand at first, or ask you guys to lower your hand just one second, because I want to clarify first, we're going to ask if anyone likes to speak and would like to speak in favor of this item, which is forty-six South Beach. Okay, there are no raised hands, so now we'll, oh, wait a minute, somebody came. So this may or may not be for uh, support or opposition, but we'll go with letting John Ryan speak.
Hi, this is John Ryan from forty-seven South Beach, and, and this is in support of Christine and Michael's application. I, I just had a question regarding an area that's notified on one of the landscaping plans at forty-six called the North Grove. I just didn't know how tall the trees were anticipated to be put in, because I couldn't see it on any of the information that was provided.
Caitlin, is that something you can answer?
Uh, yes, um, maybe that's best addressed, uh, let me share the plan again.
Does it exist, or is that part of a planting?
There are four um, mature deciduous trees in the front yard now. There's an oak tree that's um, not thriving uh, at the pool level. And then three trees in the front yard. And we're proposing that those come out, and that uh, these trees that you see here, the six trees in the front yard are proposed. Um, and that.
Where do you use the term grove? I can't read this, this is really tiny, tiny stuff.
Yeah, sorry, what are the species?
No, 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 where is, you use, turned, Ryan, John Ryan was taking a look and he saw the term grove, where is that used and what does it mean?
That's, that's correct, that's probably in reference to this reference photo that we used to uh, describe the feeling of that front. feeling of that front garden to the homeowners. We're looking for a variety of size in the canopy, so it has not a uniform evergreen screen, that's not at all the effect we're going for, we are maintaining the existing hedge and repairing the wall as needed, but the tree canopy, we're looking for a varied deciduous mix to give seasonal interest and pocket views.
All right, does that answer your question, John?
Yes, it does.
Moving on.
Hey, so now we're ready for anyone who would like to speak in opposition, raise your hand. Okay, we have Terry.
Hi, Terry Atkins again, one eighty four Row eight Avenue. So Commissioner Conroy, I appreciated, it's not that I I would have said that you didn't let me speak, but rather that we are concerned about this in our committee, the RAS committee, that we have this bulk of a house. And you called it the Great Wall of China, I love that, but because as anyone who walks along that particular route knows, the sun is coming from the south and these houses block and make shadow, they take away from the enjoyment. And the scale is completely contrary to the feel of Belle Island, so the house started out a bit that way, bloated. And now, of course, because they are going to be even taller, in in fact, four feet over the height limit, this would be even
That one is totally skirted, too.
She didn't get answered a question about it.
Hey, John, if you can hear me, turn off your mic.
Sorry.
Thanks.
So, thank you, so I I want to just back up a little bit and ask Tammy or whoever is coordinating these drawings if in fact I'm missing it, but on the existing elevations and sections, I don't see the existing grade noted, and I and Tammy and I already discussed today how in the old code and the new code, the three feet from the existing plus any bonus for being in a flood zone is, I believe, one foot now, and I heard talk of two, but that isn't clear on these drawings. So I'm not seeing where the forty four feet is even being measured from, they call it average grade, but it's really starts with the existing grade, then there's the three feet plus the bonus, correct, Tammy?
So, I mean, I don't know that we, under old code, we added a bonus, now it's essentially a a flat application of that bonus applied to all those single family residential zones, so the average grade calculations should be part of the survey or the engineered site plan.
Or in the section where they have the height, that would be so helpful. Because I'm just seeing it coming from average grade, but the average grade doesn't doesn't show how it relates to existing grade, and we we know that the code is the three feet from existing.
So
It's floating up in the air, average grade.
Yeah, Craig, can you bring up the average grade calculation information?
Yeah, so the 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 elevations and sections.
May I just interject for just a second? Mister Conroy, isn't it the ZBA's policy and practice for us to respond to all of these questions from the community, particularly those in opposition during rebuttal? Rather than individually, individual commentary from someone concerned about the project, and then we respond, it's typically been in rebuttal.
If somebody comes in and says, I want to speak, and I'm in favor of the project, then I've never heard anybody be unhappy with that. If they come in and want to speak and they're not in favor of the project, sometimes that creates unhappiness.
Well, I'm coming in and saying, I I don't see, sorry, Andy, I just don't see the numbers there, I don't see the line that it's supposed to be measured from. So I've just Yeah.
Yeah. If it can be provided, because we were talking about a one month delay.
Yes.
Then it could be added, and I'm sure that they'll make an effort to do that.
Perfect.
Respect, I don't need a debate, I don't want to do debates.
Perfect.
Make your comment and then we'll move on.
Perfect. That was, that was my comment, I didn't see, I see a line floating above the ground and that doesn't relate to the existing. And I'd like to know where the existing grade is. So that we, that that's important.
Tammy, just make sure you get that information for the
Yeah, well, yeah, it's there, it's just part of, I think what now I know what Terry's referencing, the elevation plan, which depicts the average grade. But the average grade comes from the engineer's information, so that is what I was trying to
The survey of the original existing grade?
Mm-hmm, and well, the proposed, the proposed finished grade.
Right, but but it's the existing grade that dictates how much you can go up.
You can alter it by three feet, and then it's measured, and then it's measured from that three feet.
That you've got to have that existing grade shown in the sections and elevations, then you can show your three feet and your forty feet.
But I want Liz to get mad at me, but we're not elevating existing grade to artificially increase the average grade calculation. We are effectively measuring to an existing average grade. But that will be clarified clearly for the record.
Yeah, that's a, no, that's a fair question to have asked, and Tammy, do we have a topo map in the plan?
We do.
Three feet per line?
Yes.
Thank you.
One foot contours and spot elevation.
Okay. Just make it available if people ask for it. Terry, we're going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, that's what I need.
Alrighty. Do we have anybody else that wanted to raise their hand?
Okay, this is last opportunity for those folks in attendance, if you wanted to speak in opposition of this item. No additional hands.
Okay, so I think we're good, you want to do rebuttal now?
Oh, wait a minute, hang on.
Of course.
So, oh yeah, here we go, this is Bessie, is that correct?
Bessie, who are you and where and where do you reside?
Hi, Bessie, you can speak. You have to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Bessie Kong, twelve Pnoyer Street.
Okay, thanks.
Really, I just raised my hand to clarify what Tammy just said, so this is the last time people in opposition can speak at this public hearing, but a month from now, when you come back, will there also be opportunities to review the new additional information and speak?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah. And do we have anybody else? Because I want to go to Liz, and then Liz can offer her comments. And then she may want to do an actual closing next month, but go ahead, Liz.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the commission, yes, if we're going to keep the hearing open to provide you with responses, additional information, clarification, we will do that next month, we'll do rebuttal next month, and summation next month, and if the public has additional comments, we'll respond to those comments during rebuttal next month, I think that probably makes makes the most sense so that you get the information you need. We can explain the information, explain our findings, and then if the public still has some commentary, we'll answer at that point.
Okay. Just so that we don't lose track, is there anything that you heard tonight that you think was just completely wrong and out of hand and should be addressed immediately?
I don't think I think, I don't think so, I think most of the comments that were that were incorrect were addressed. But if we come up with something during our review of the commentary tonight, we'll certainly make those points again.
So I agree, we'll put off your other comments until next month.
That's fine.
So if everybody's amenable, we'll go ahead and move it on to next month and leave it open. Good?
That's fine.
Items, by the way, so that we're not confused. Well, Seth?
Chairman, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to reverse course here and get back to the other two applications.
I just wanted to throw throw in there that the next meeting is May fifteenth, just for anyone who's needing that information.
You know, I think we need to send an email out tomorrow during the business day.
Tomorrow's not a business day.
No, anyway, our next business day.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, anyway, our next business day, let's send out to all the people who are part of this process, what the next meeting date time is, and that is by Zoom.
Okay, so I won't be able to do that to people who just came in as attendees, I won't have that, that won't necessarily show, I won't have their emails.
So it'll be in the calendar.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Okay, excellent. So we start with Three Gal Road. At this point, we're not accepting additional input, so it's just discussion among the members of the board. And it's kind of funny, like, we wouldn't normally entertain approving this, but at the same time, this is like mock snicks, I know who cares, I mean, the the chimney doesn't bump out any further. And the overall design is improved. I don't know that there's a tremendous hardship involved, but I think there is one, because they need a variance. And overall, I think that it's an improvement and useful to to make the move with the chimney.
I agree. It's stay, it's moving towards whatever the front road was, but it's not, it's still within that setback.
Yeah.
So.
You okay?
Keith, yeah, absolutely, I was nodding, perhaps not vigorously, but I was nodding.
I didn't catch the non vigorous.
Sorry, 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 no, I completely agree, be happy to second the motion, or even if we're going to make the motion.
Zoom is asking me to confirm the language in which I speak. Must be saying weird stuff. I I don't know, Steve Ferguson, you okay?
Yes.
We'll we'll go ahead with the vote in a second here, Ben?
Yeah, yeah, seems very reasonable.
I think the only hardship that I can identify is the lot itself, and I don't find a problem with an expansion that's unnecessary, I don't have a problem with the idea of moving the chimney. So I'm going to move that we approve it into the hardship is primarily the lots.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your handy, that way I know you've said aye, thank you. Do we have, yes, we do, we've got to do a second, yes?
I said a second.
No, no, I mean a second mo- motion.
Yep, the coastal.
Coastal.
So my move that with respect to this property, the proposal is consistent with CCMA goals and policies, at least that's what we've been told, and will not adversely impact any coastal resources. So, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
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 Thank you. That one is all set. Then we're moving on to twenty two Harbor View, the curiover from last month. They came in with their revised plan. I see a reduction in the nonconformity that is significant. And, you know, I guess we could force him to make a complete reduction of nonconformity, and that just comes across to me as a little stupid. So I think what I saw is it's certainly acceptable to me, you guys want, might want to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reduction is sufficient, I don't have any problems with the proposal we saw today.
Okay.
I agree, I am curious to see what planning and zoning does to that text amendment, because, you know, could kind of negate a lot of it.
Yeah, actually, I I do agree as well, they actually came back with some revisions and look better than last time they were for us.
If we push it any further, they don't really have a deck. With respect to the second requirement, because they're near the water, we have to, again, and let's just finish this one, so we did all in favor, everybody approved it, right, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Wait, did we?
Yeah, I think Ben seconded, correct, Ben?
No, I thought that was the site plan review one.
Yeah.
But I just did this again, just to make sure.
Okay.
Now, the second one is the typical language, where we say the proposal is consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will not adversely impact any coastal resources, and that's correct based on what we've been told. So, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Keith seconds, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Great.
Wait, hold on, sorry, that's for the coastal, the the CCMA and for the for the actual
It's the thing that I do best, the one where we're supposed to say everything's wonderful, but we need somebody to tell us that.
Would you, would you indulge staff, Andy, I didn't, I I don't know if I looked away, I didn't get the vote for the variance for the coastal buffer. I I I got that everyone agreed, but I didn't get
Now, in both, all the votes that we've taken on these this evening have all been unanimous.
Okay.
All of them.
All right, so is motion to approve as is for the deck?
Yeah, so we're good, now, if anybody was not, if I'm incorrect about that, speak up now, or if we're ever hold your peace.
I didn't technically get my vote, I will do it now, aye.
Aye, good.
Okay.
Anybody else have issues that they want to discuss before we get the minutes approved? Did anybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Good, Steve, you can make the motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from my last meeting.
All right, I second it, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Danielle abstains, anybody other, no other abstentions, right? So despite her abstention, we're unanimous among those who can vote tonight. All right, we're done then. If anybody needs information and have been hanging on to get it, you can check in tomorrow if if you're one of the parties involved.
Check in Monday.
That's Good Friday holidays killing me.
Yeah, well, it should be good, isn't there an Easter Monday, too, did we take that one off?
No.
So Monday, you can call in. There is an Easter Monday, I'm surprised we don't take. Anybody have anything further they wanted to discuss? Okay, I went to a class, and the class was how to read plans. And other than it being probably ninety percent useless to me, the ten percent that they didn't get to spend much time on, talked about all the resources that exist online, which are really amazing. So we're going to have to send out a little note to everybody and how to get to these resources, and then you might want to go try them out on your own, figure out what they are. I I found some of them just astoundingly good. And unfortunately, they were running out of time, so they didn't really talk about it much. But we were talking about things, what's a topo map? And how do you read it, and you know, those of us that have any experience in life know what a topo map is, particularly those of us that were born in military.
Well, if we were civilized and had a four day Easter weekend, I might sign up to read some of that stuff.
Yeah, I will try to get a note out tomorrow morning, and so if you get really bored Yeah, I will try to get a note out tomorrow morning, and so if you get really bored and you're not enjoying what's going on, then you can take a look at it, hopefully they don't take a holiday and pull a site down. Because it's really good stuff. Anyway, with that, Happy Easter to everyone. Is there anybody that didn't get their issue discussed?
Yes, just real quick, to piggyback Ben, I, I was able to go on the website to find the material, so maybe Tammy just remind to send the materials out in advance, I don't know if you sent it out a month before the week of, I don't know how you normally do it, but what your
It was about a week.
But, um.
It was about a week.
I was able to figure it out eventually, so I think this month, the link to the meeting materials was not in the agenda, but I pulled up an old agenda, I clicked that link, and that link is a general link, it always goes to the page with the most up-to-date stuff. So I was able to find it all.
So the.
What I did is I set up on my home screen a, a link to go to the city's website section that provides all the information that the applicants have sent in.
Yeah, the agenda I forwarded, sorry, the agenda I forwarded had the link, but then what's happening now is there's a different methodology for uploading all the, to get a uniformity in all the agendas, so now you go, I don't know if you've noticed, the site looks slightly different when you click on that, and so maybe that got removed right there.
But the applications are there.
Yeah. Yeah, they're always on the.
Yeah, and you have all the information in the applications, which is what you want to be looking at, you may not be super thorough in the way you look at them, but you take a good glance. And then if you have questions, you'd be all prepared to ask them. But in terms of the agenda itself, it's about a week ahead. But do, if I need to let you know what those, how to get there, I'll write that up also and send it to you. All set?
All set.
Ready to go look at the bunny?
Attention to adjourn.
I second.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Have a good evening.
See you guys, thanks, bye.
Thanks so much, bye-bye.